I call the Select Board Meeting to Order tonight, Tuesday, April 18th, at 7:08 PM. A motion to call the meeting to order?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, please. Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I'm here as well. I ask that you stand to salute our flag if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, free, and just.
In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So first on the agenda is item, Discussion of Open Meeting Law Complaint Received on April 6, 2023, filed by David Laurie. Votes may be taken. Has everyone had an opportunity to review? The description of the alleged violation. Stoughton, Mass. has five-member Select Board representing a three-member quorum. The Finance Committee meeting Agenda to deliberate on any matters relating to fiscal year '24 or fiscal year '23 budget and town meeting warrant articles, votes may be taken, was scheduled on Wednesday, March 29, 2023. The Finance Committee Chair recognized the Select Board Chair and the Select Board Vice Chair to show support for a revised school committee budget. The third Select Board member was present at the same meeting. The new revised school budget was received three hours before the same Finance Committee meeting started. The open meeting law violation occurred because a quorum of the Select Board was present at the March 29, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, and the Select Board was recognized to speak in favor of this new information. The influence of the Select Board over the Finance Committee on a topic regarding recent changes to the school's budget was inappropriate. The Finance Committee Agenda for Wednesday, March 29, 2023, did not include advertising of a joint meeting with the Stoughton Select Board. Is that the description that you recognized and you read? Moving right along.
Just before you move on, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You might have already planned to address this. But in the complaint, there's also a section where the complainant is being asked to provide or recommend a remedy, and Mr. Laurie wrote, "The Select Board needs to address these violations in open session at upcoming Select Board meeting." So I just wanted to make sure that was clear as well.
Thank you very much, and which is the reason this is now on the agenda for tonight. Our resolution was written. We consulted with the activities for that evening and consulted with our town manager. And his response, if you would like for me to read it aloud, that would be in your favor, if you would like me to do so. Okay. Thank you very much. I received a head and affirmative. This letter, this proposed resolution, will be sent to David Laurie. Votes may be taken if you are in agreement. Regarding March 29, 2023, Open Meeting Law Complaint. Dear Mr. Laurie, I am writing in response to the open meeting law complaint that was received in the Select Board's office and the town clerk's office on April 6, 2023, a copy of which is included herewith. Your complaint is in regard to the March 29, 2023, meeting of the Finance Committee and, in particular, the Finance Committee's Agenda Item identified as, "Any matters relating to fiscal '24 and/or fiscal year '23 budget and town meeting warrant articles, votes may be taken." You allege the Chair of the Finance Committee recognized the Select Board Chair and Vice Chair at that meeting to show support for a revised school committee budget. You also allege that a third Select Board member was present at the same meeting. You allege that an open meeting law violation occurred because a quorum of the Select Board was present at the March 29, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, and the Select Board was recognized to speak. The Finance Committee Agenda for Wednesday, March 29, 2023, did not include advertising of a joint meeting with the Stoughton Select Board. By way of relief, you request that the Select Board needs to address these violations in open session at the upcoming Select Board meeting. While not mentioned in your complaint, I note that a video recording of the Finance Committee meeting is available here, and the link is provided. Please be advised in accordance with 940 CMR 29.05, Number 4 and Number 5. The Board reviewed your allegations at its duly noticed public meeting on April 18, 2023. After giving careful consideration to your complaint and as discussed below, the Board determined that the specific issues you raised are not violations of open meeting law. Nonetheless, the Board, as it must, has provided the relief you have sought by addressing this matter at a public session. As a preliminary matter, I note that the open meeting law explicitly allows for the attendance of Board members at the meeting of another Board. That in and of itself is, by definition, an open meeting that requires posting as long as the visiting members communicate only by open participation in the meeting on those matters under discussion by the host body and do not deliberate. GO Chapter 30A, Section 18. A quorum of a public body may also attend a public or private gathering, including a conference or a training program or a media, social, or other event, so long as the members do not deliberate. Traditionally, in determining whether a quorum of a public body deliberated at another public body's meeting, the Division of Open Government, the Division, quote, in parentheses, used to look for indicia, how do you pronounce it? Indicia of deliberation, such as whether the visiting body members were seated with the general public and whether they participated by open participation. And that's open meeting law 2020-30. The Division has also held that when members of a public body attend a meeting or forum of another public body and participate as members of the public, communicating openly and not between or among a quorum of the public body, such communications do not constitute deliberation. In any event, the analysis is a fact-specific examination of the content of the members' communication. In this instant matter, there was no posted meeting of the Select Board on March 29, 2023. Three members of the Select Board attended the March 29, 2023 Finance Committee meeting. Their interaction to which you refer occurs approximately 10 minutes into the meeting. The Chair of the Select Board spoke at the request of the Chair of the School Committee, who at the time was thanking the Select Board for its support of the School Committee's revised budget. The Chair of the Select Board expressed her support for the revised school budget. She also noted that she was expressing her personal support. The Vice Chair spoke next and expressed his personal support. The third member of the Select Board did not speak and was not invited to. The interaction concluded approximately 12 minutes into the meeting. During that approximate two-minute span, three members of the Select Board, a quorum, were present in the meeting. All three members are visible in the video recording during this interaction and clearly auditable. I also note that the School Committee budget is a matter clearly within the purview of the Select Board. In fact, it is because of the Select Board's prior discussion and vote on this matter on March 28, 2023, that the Chair and Vice Chair saw fit to report to the Select Board's support of the revised school committee budget to the Finance Committee. A copy of the Select Board's March 28, 2023 Agenda and the relevant documents in its meeting packet are included herewith. The recording of the meeting is available here at http://backslash71commo18411835.comcast-publicsite show 911 channel 2. Accordingly, the Select Board members that spoke were expressing their personal views as well as the result of the Select Board vote just the night before. The Board recognizes that when a quorum of a Board attends another public meeting and participates without posting its own meeting, it may violate the open meeting law. The Division, however, recognizes an exception where Board members simply report on a discussion or a vote of that Board that had already taken place in a previous open meeting. As you will see from the Select Board's March 28, 2023 Agenda and from the materials associated therewith, the Select Board had already considered the revised school committee budget. These budget revisions were directly related to the Agenda Item identified as Select Board Vote on Fiscal Year '24 Budget Addbacks. At the conclusion of that discussion, the Select Board voted unanimously to forward those revisions to the Finance Committee, which, of course, was meeting the next night. Accordingly, the Chair and the Vice Chair's report of support to the Finance Committee at the Finance Committee's March 29, 2023 meeting were merely inference of the Select Board's discussion and vote at its March 28, 2023 meeting. Accordingly, the Board finds that the specific issues you raised in your March 29, 2023 Open Meeting Law Complaint are not violations of the open meeting law. A copy of this determination has been filed with the Attorney General's Office along with your complaint, and you may appeal this determination to the Attorney General's Office in accordance with state law. Yours truly, Deborah Roberts, Chair. Copy, Select Board, Division of Open Government, Attorney General's Office. I ask my fellow Board members if you have any comments on or discussion. If not, I ask that we take a motion, and that would be, Mr. McCrisky? I reckon not.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I say this hoping that people that are attending meetings and those who are watching at home, and they think that they've seen or heard a violation in the open meeting law, to do your homework and call the Ethics Commission, call the Division of Open Government, and ask them before we go through this type of a process. Unfortunately, there is a group in town of a few people who are always looking for that gotcha moment. And we're not getting anywhere with that attitude. You know, it's just not right for the citizens of this town to have people involved with this system looking to take people out like with a sniper's rifle. It's just not right. This Division of Open Government is available to the residents. Please call them. Don't put our attorney into, you know, reviewing facts and looking at minutes of meetings and looking at videos to hear what was said and what wasn't said. Do your homework. If a Board or a Commission has violated the open meeting law, which I have done in the past, it's never intentional. We make mistakes. We're human. But please, do your homework. This is not good for anyone's government, and I don't care what Commission, town meeting, or anybody. We all serve the taxpayers of this town. It's about time some people grow up, you know, and if they're going to make an accusation, do your homework first. It's just not fair, and it doesn't reflect on some people. You know, I don't know, I'm not talking to specifics, but I know it's been done before. There's been complaints that have not been, you know, there's been nothing found. But it's just getting ridiculous now, and I just feel that something has to be said. You know, I mean, I would have liked, you know, in this case, Mr. Laurie could have reached out first and like what I did mine a few years ago, back about five years ago, I did my homework first. And the Division of Open Government said, "If that's the way it happened, that's definitely a violation," put it in writing, and I did. You know, and then again, on the flip end, when I was Chair a couple of years ago, I took past practice of what we had done. I didn't know there was a change in the law that, you know, it said, "If you, you don't do it that way." And we're found to be in violation. I apologized to the residents, my peers, and we moved forward. But we make mistakes, but we shouldn't be going through this type of a process only to say to somebody, "It's not warranted." It doesn't make sense. It's a waste of our time. It's a waste of the town manager's time. It's a waste of the Office of Open Government's time, you know, and when we make a complaint that might be valid, what's to say they're not going to look it up and say, "Oh, it's Stoughton again. Oh, here we go again." You know, it's just, I don't think that the residents of our town are getting what they deserve from their former government when we act like children in a playground sometimes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. McCrisky. Vice Chair Cave?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of years ago, it's been more years than I, I don't know, four years ago or so, we had just recently lost a secretary for the Select Board, and there was a bit of a gap in time before we got another one. And we were falling a little bit behind on our minutes, which was something we didn't want to do, so I was trying to get us caught up. And I read through a couple of different documents. Minutes are not a thing I have any skill at at all, so I just had to, you know, check to see what has to be in these. And I looked through, you know, Robert's Rules of Order, and the minutes are like just the motion, the votes, the time you start, the time you end, and I'm like, "Well, I've seen the minutes, and they're more than that." But, you know, I work in automation, so I can't, I kind of ask myself, like, "How can I make this faster and easier?" I was like, "Can I just get like a transcript of the whole meeting and say, 'There are the minutes,' you know, there's everything." So I called up Department of Local Government, and I asked them, like, "What exactly do you need in these minutes to make sure that it's not an open meeting law violation?" And they agreed, "Yeah, like the Robert Rules of Order is too little, but a full transcript is too much." And I said, "Well, how do I know?" And they're like, "Ah, you kind of just, you just know. You sort of see it, you know it when you see it." And they were very nice and very friendly about it, but they mostly mentioned that when people have issues with the minutes, they're not looking for somebody who's made a, you know, clerical mistake, or they maybe have left out a detail incidentally. They're looking, they are looking for people who are, you know, egregiously sort of breaking some of these laws. It's, you know, I don't want to speak for anybody over there, but I understood it as essentially, you know, if you really step right outside of the lines of the crosswalk, you know, you're technically jaywalking, but like, is that the time, really, is that the crime that you want to, you know, arrest somebody on? I think that with this particular meeting, the reason I bring this up, with this particular meeting, I think that there was some questions about the potential of this being an issue with the open meeting law before the meeting started. We talked about amongst ourselves, and I know some of the members of the Finance Committee also, I had heard some whispers here and there. I think the general consensus, and I felt pretty comfortable at the time, saying like, "Based on what I know about the open meeting law, I think, I think this wouldn't be, this really wouldn't qualify as having broken it." It's not that I don't care about it, but at the same time, I think that our intentions were generally good, and I knew even if, for some reason, we were technically wrong, I felt like this is something that we would, you know, people would more or less be able to understand our reason for being there. And so I was disappointed to see a complaint when, you know, when you know the person complaining has your phone number, they could have called and sort of talked to you about it and said, "I think that was an issue," or raised it. Instead, they go to, you know, the Attorney General's Office as the first step. And I found that disappointing, but at the same time, like, it's not the worst thing I've ever had, if it happened to me, it's not, it's not that big a deal. I think it's important that these laws exist, and it's important that people take them seriously and make every attempt to follow them. I certainly do. But, you know, as Mr. McCrisky said earlier, like, sometimes you make a mistake, and like, and they're not exactly the most crystal-clear laws. And even on this one, you know, I feel like, as we spoke with Town Council, you know, some of it's based on some decisions, some of his opinions here, as I understand it, we do have them online, so he can always, he can tell me if I'm wrong or not. But they are based on very recent case history and where there was a similar question, where people thought this didn't seem to be, based on the letter of it, didn't seem to be a violation, and it turned out to be a violation based on the letter of the law. So it can be a little bit tricky. I hope people know that we do make a concerted effort to follow these laws. We take them very seriously. On the other hand, sometimes you make mistakes. As it turns out, this time, you know, I do agree with Town Council that this was not a violation. But at the same time, like, sometimes it happens by mistake, and so I'm not, I don't know how to, I don't want to sound like I'm like complaining about being, having a light shined on some issue of fact. I'm not, I think it's appropriate that people question this and take it seriously and say, you know, "I think that's a violation." So I don't have really strong, I guess, two strong feelings about that. But at the same time, I, you know, I think the facts of the case do suggest that this is not a violation, and I feel comfortable about it. Mr. Winter, is there anything, I know I didn't want to speak for you, but is there anything that could help, maybe help sort of fill in some of the blanks there?
Well, again, well, first of all, thank you for recognizing me, Vice Chair Cave. Brian Winter, me, Tallaman and Costa from Town Council's office. Maybe just to underscore a point you made that this is a complex area of the law. And, you know, many public officials are doing, you know, a thousand things a day in good faith and using their best efforts in furtherance of, you know, the town's goals. And as the Chair read the draft response, I hope people picked up on the fact that the law, the statutory provisions of the law, recognize the right of Board members, who are also residents and citizens of your community, to attend other governmental meetings. And so that's right there in the law. There's also provision that allows them to attend, obviously, social gatherings and similar events. And so historically, those are events that would not necessarily give rise to any kind of open meeting law violation, provided the Board didn't use it as pretext to hold a meeting. And so the other thing you referenced, Mr. Cave, was that, you know, there have been some developments in the law of this area, and that's true. About a year ago, we became aware of a decision that came out of a North Shore community, and it was a very similar situation where members of that Select Board attended a council on aging meeting and spoke. And they were found to be in violation for a quorum being present and having spoken. And in that case, the Division of Open Government found it was a violation, but recognized that it wasn't intentional or with any kind of bad faith. And so while noting the violation, the remedy that the state imposed was to tell them to be more mindful in the future and to do a better job now that you do know. And so, you know, it seemed to be an appropriate response, you know, under the circumstances. But also in that decision, they recognized that there are exceptions to exceptions to exceptions, and that this is complicated. And where often, you know, your decision to attend a meeting of another body might not be premeditated, it might be sort of an ad hoc spur of the moment, it might be something that you knew another member of your Board was going to, but not a third, and so, you know, there are a lot of variables in these kinds of situations. And so it's a lot of law and a lot of information to keep track of. And so as noted in the draft response, you know, of course, there's an exception when members are simply reporting, you know, statements, positions, votes, et cetera, that the Board has already taken. And so that's, that's an exception to this, and one that we've cited in the draft response. So I just thought I'd underscore a couple of those points that you made, which I, which I agree with as well. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Let's make one more.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Winter. Yes, Vice Chair Cave?
Very quickly, Mr. Winter, since we have your attention here. As we've been discussing this, and I've been thinking about it on my own, one of my chief concerns going forward is the impact this would have as a town meeting. So four out of the five members of this Board are town meeting representatives. Anything discussed at town meeting falls essentially within the jurisdiction of the Select Board, or the vast majority of it does. To what extent are we, do we have any protections, speaking as citizens and members of town meeting, at town meeting, since we're also on the Select Board?
And I'm sure the Select Board is not the only Board representative at town meeting as well, of course. So the open meeting law specifically exempts town meeting from its requirements. So when Boards attend or their members attend town meeting, that meeting itself is not subject to the posting and notice requirements of the open meeting law. It's explicitly exempt. Now, that doesn't mean that a Board can't hold a meeting in parallel or simultaneously. For example, sometimes for zoning articles, the planning Board may want to schedule a meeting on the same night if it needs to give a report and recommendation, and they can still do that. But the state has historically opined that if those conversations between Board members are occurring during an active session of town meeting, that it's not subject to the open meeting law.
Thank you very much. That was something that had been weighing on me for the last couple of days. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that question, Vice Chair Cave. I have two. That would be Mr. Carrara is next, and then Mr. Coulter after that.
My comment is just very quick and clear that being on the Board before, there was a seminar that I did attend, and that's where we got what you just asked. Your question was that town meeting reps are exempt. That's why you have some employees or town meeting reps, they're exempt too. So it's a large wall between. Always give me the broken one. It's a good wall between what we do and what we can do there, so we can talk like human beings when we're there. But I was always taught, and they taught us, maybe things have changed, that the best way to avoid impropriety is to stay away from it, that there's no need of three people being at something and showing support because this is what swings people going, "Oh, my God, look what they're doing." And if you weren't a select person at the time, you might look at it that way saying, "I thought three people couldn't do that." You're a selectman 24/7, so I don't know where the resident part comes into it because no matter what you say, is held at that level of 24/7. So I don't know where you become the resident and you're... So I don't know where you become the resident and you're not a select person. You, you can't give it up and walk away from it. You swore an oath to it, and that's what I was always taught. And maybe it's wrong, maybe Attorney Winter knows better than I do, but it's very simple to just stay away. Mr. Coulter was going to have a meeting, I opted, I said I will stay away. But I don't think there should be any meetings that affect what a select board is going to do and not have us involved in it, when information is given before we're even getting a presentation on it. And it's no, no disrespect to anybody that's here, it's just that we're who we are 24/7. So if you feel the need to be three, maybe two people are enough to be there to show support. But I think where you voted before for the budget, I wasn't present that night, there's no need to go to that budget. They can't understand what was said by you people, stay away from it. Then we don't get in the middle of who was right, who was wrong. And I'm not pointing fingers. It's just, like Joe said, there's spears that like to come. Some stick in the wall, some go through you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Mr. Coulter.
I love that line, Mr. Carrera, some go through you. That's pretty good. Madam Chair, just, I'd like to comment on a bit of history. I, I was engaged as a member of the legislature in a very lengthy floor debate on this law. And of that lengthy floor debate, probably 20% of the time was spent on the true priority in the passage of the law. And that was to make sure government leaders didn't involve themselves in backroom deals. You know, where three members would meet and block out the other two, if you would. 20% of the time was spent on that. The other 80% of the time was defining what the open meeting law does not mean. And, and to try and get out in front of the gotcha moments that have occurred, I believe, today, and to, to, to carry on where Mr. McCrisky left off. It was clear to me from day one that there was no open meeting law violation. That's coming from a person who debated it for 13 hours one night. There was no intent, there was no debate, there was no deliberation, the members didn't show up together, the three of them didn't sit together, they spoke as citizens. So I only ask if anyone in the town has any question about an opening meeting violation, I ask that they call my office. I have direct access to Mr. Winter, Mr. Winter, pardon me, Brian. And we will give it the due respect it deserves. If they have a question, we'll research it, we'll give them an answer. And if in fact there was a violation, they should feel free to make that complaint. But if there's not, they would have, in this case, saved dozens and dozens of hours of discussion and research and legal fees in, in researching the extent of this particular complaint. There's a lot of important work before the town right now, and this was a very high-level distraction for every single person in this room and for council. Now, that doesn't take away anybody's right to file that complaint. We are just giving an open invitation that if anybody has any questions, they should feel free to call, and we will research it, we'll get them an answer. They're still free to do whatever they choose after they get that information. But at least perhaps, to Joe's point, we can provide the research, the data and context to try and avoid a lot of, a lot of unnecessary work. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Now, I ask my fellow board members, what is your wish? I am interested in a motion to adopt the response and authorization for me to sign the letter.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote, I vote aye as well. Unanimous decision. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving right along to our next agenda item, which is discuss, discussion of the new lease Fran Brutini procurement officer. This is 1137 Park Street, Cedar Hill concessionaire, and votes may be taken. Hello and good evening to you. Nice seeing you again.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Fran Brutini, the procurement officer for the town of Stoughton. And Victor is here, he's the Cedar Hill Golf Course Manager. And we are here just to discuss a proposal that was offered for a new lease for the concessionaire at Cedar Hill. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to put this in perspective, this leasee has been there for a few years now, managed through very difficult times through COVID, has expanded her business and made it a terrific accessory to the golf course. I think in part, the golf course success is, is associated with that successful business. The discussion that Fran and I had regarding the lease, which you'll notice the same lease as it was in the last term, was will the market bear an increase? And at the end of the day, and after consultation with Victor, we decided that because of the way this business is managed, which is very responsibly, because of the value added it's bringing to the golf course, that we're asking the board to agree to a lease value, a lease amount that is consistent with the prior year, and to not mess with it. Frankly, we could have gone out to bid and perhaps got another $200, $300, and had to manage or train that operator in, in, and how to responsibly serve alcohol. This leasee has that down pat. They're very responsible, they provide a quality service, and it's a, it's a real benefit to, to the, to the club to have that type of business operating its facility. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, please, oh, Ms., just one second, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to add to that, the dollar amounts. We all know that there's been such a successful tenure with the new concessionaire. I just want to read these numbers into the record. The total Cedar Hill Enterprise Fund for 2018, $207,819.47. The first year, 2020, with the new concessionaire, $331,906.27. Fiscal 2021, $550,608. Fiscal 2022, $546,418.66. And currently in here, and the season is just about to start up big time, $350,653.32. And just to remind folks of a little history lesson, is that years ago, this was being funded by your tax dollars. Every year, we had about $100,000 a year that was taken from the taxpayers and invested into the golf course. Now, we're making record profits. The concessionaire put $40,000 of their own money into a municipal building that they cannot recover to get this ready to be this entity and to bring this, this type of crowd in. So I think that deserves to be entered into, you know, our discussion as well, because Victor has done a great job and, and was a major role in bringing this relationship together, so they complement each other. And there was numbers in, these numbers are reflected as well in the total golf games that have been played. It's, it's going up every single year. For the first time that I can remember, as long as I've been involved, and I started a town meeting in 1986, this is the first time that this has been 100% profitable, and it's just huge profits. You know, so I think the numbers, the numbers actually reflect this, and I just felt that it was worthy of them bringing it in and it be read into this, this process. So thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Yes, Victor, you wanted to make some comments, because we have nothing but praises.
Yeah, I'm not going to keep going on it, but to tie off of what Joe said, we had talked about the number of rounds, like, it was about 7,000 rounds when I first got there. 2020, we did 11,500. That's their first year there, things are getting settled. We went to 17,000 the next year, 19,800 last year, and we're easily going to clip 22,000 to 23,000 this year. There are three factors that have made Cedar Hill what it is right now. It's, it was the change. My heart has been there 100%, and we know that there were little things that hadn't happened. Money had not been invested on the actual course itself since, what, 1976, when you purchased it. CPC kicked in $350,000, we made the change on the sixth hole, we went up 46%. COVID happened, we went up another 28%. And Gina came, and it's just been a steamroll. All the people that are coming are staying, they're happy. We have more town support now from people that don't golf. Not just based upon our numbers, but because they come up every Saturday morning, and they're either buying bread, or they're coming up and they're, they're hanging out and having dinner on, you know, during the week, or coming up for lunch during work. All those people and all those reasons are, are the reasons why we're here. Those three factors, and if you keep all those things into play, all the stars are aligning. Like Town Manager said, let's not mess with something that's working, don't try to reinvent it, so, that's it.
Yes, yes, I agree. They, they have the secret sauce. You know, the food is delicious, the entertainment, you know, it's, it's really nice, it's beautiful inside as well. So you're looking for a motion tonight, a motion in favor to renew the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It's a unanimous decision, and thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Good night. Keep up, keep up the good work, Victor. Bill, Bill's out there, Bill, don't let him get out of line. Thank you, folks.
Moving right along to our next item on our agenda, it's the consent agenda. First is to approval of open session minutes, meeting March 20th, 2023. A road race permit application, once a night, always a night, 5K on May 20th, 2023. One day alcohol beverage license application, Catholic Parish of Stoughton on May 6, 2023. Does anyone want to pull any agenda item?
Second.
Oh, hi, how are you? Hi.
Well, why don't we just call for the vote? We don't need any presentations if we're all going to vote for her.
Okay.
Just a, just a little button on there.
Yes. You're all going to vote in favor.
Nelson Pimentel, the deacon and for the Archdiocese of Boston, and the leader of Catholic Parish of Stoughton, just came here to say thank you to you all, and you're all welcome to come to our fundraiser dinner on May 6th at St. James Parish.
Thank you very much for the personal invitation. Now to my fellow, okay, I have a motion to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I vote aye as well, it's unanimous decision on the meeting minutes, the road race, and the one day alcohol beverage license for Catholic Parish. Moving right along to our next agenda item, and that is, would be interviews for the 300th Anniversary Committee. At one of our recent meetings, the Chair of the 300th asked for that committee to be expanded and expand it by three. So that means we have three vacancies, we advertised, and we now have six additional names applying for three vacancies. So with that, just a minute. Oh, is it? So, yes, Mr. McCrisky, I was going to list the...
I'm ready to make a motion when you'll accept it.
Oh, you're ready to make a motion, and you didn't want to hear from the candidates? Okay, ready to make a motion. Amanda Bettel, George Delinsky, who was unable to attend tonight, but he's here in spirit. Karen Clip, Kelly Lajery, thank you for that correction. Bernard Planeta, and Margaret Suick. All right.
Madam Chair, make a motion to appoint the applicants to the 300th Committee.
So all six applicants?
All six, yep, all six that applied.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that means not only did it expand by three, it expanded by an additional three. So congratulations, Amanda, George, Karen, Kelly, Bernard, and Margaret. Thank you very much. I see the Chair is here. Did you have a few words to say, Ms. Joan? Surprise, surprise.
I think it's on, is it on?
Oh, yes. Right.
I'm Joanne Callanan, the chairperson of the 300 Committee. Glad to invite them all on, hopefully we aren't too many, but I think it's going to be exciting, and we're having our first meeting Monday. So hopefully we'll start to get some dates and times, and lots of ideas, lots and lots of ideas are coming in already.
That's great. So you've already organized, right? So you're the Chair?
We've tried, but like I said before, we didn't have a quorum, and we couldn't vote on anything and so forth. But the library's been very cooperative as letting us use the room, where we presently hang the large posters with each month on them, so that we know what's going on on which month. And that's what we need to get first and figure out what, you know, what part of the year you want to do what. But they're great, so far, it's been good for the ones that have shown up. So we'll see how it goes.
Well, thank you so very much for sharing, and talk with you soon. Thank you. Oh, yes, Mr. Town Manager.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that each new committee member just stand and introduce themselves, so we can put a face with a name?
That is such a great idea.
Thank you very much. I was going to suggest that same thing, and I appreciate your doing it.
Maybe start with Karen, you're on the end.
Hello, Karen.
Peggy Suick.
Peggy.
And, and, and...
Thank you all.
Thank you so very much. Oh.
Other question. Is there any chance I can get a copy of their application, so that I know what they like or what they do, or why they wanted to be on the committee?
I don't see why not, yeah. And you need their contact information anyway.
Yeah.
So maybe you could talk with Joda?
Absolutely.
And tomorrow, and then that'll take care of it. Oh, yes, Mr. Carrera.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to all the applicants, make sure you stop at the clerk's office, sign the book, and get sworn in.
Yeah, that's very important. Stop at the clerk's office to get sworn in. Yes, talking to all the new members of your committee. Great, before you have your meeting. That would be helpful. All right, moving right along to our introduction to the new town planner, William Roth. I'll turn it over, I don't see Mark Tisdale here, but, oh, yes.
Mark, Bill, thanks. Members of the board, I'm delighted to introduce to you our new town planner, Bill Roth. He comes with very high recommendations, I'd like to read a little bit from his bio. Bill's 32 years of experience in municipal government, in the field of planning and economic and community development, including administration and supervision, uniquely qualifies him for this position. From his resume, I gleaned a few points. The range of his experience includes planning and economic and community development, budgeting, supervision, grant writing and administration, construction administration, policy implementation, and municipal procurement. His experiences in Fairhaven, Fall River, Taunton, make him well-versed in understanding issues unique to municipalities throughout Massachusetts. Bill brings a diverse and extensive range of talents, which will enable him to be an effective town planner and to be an extraordinary, extraordinary tool and resource for Mr. Tisdale, for my office with respect to economic development. So I want to, on behalf of my colleague Mark Tisdale, introduce you, Bill Roth. And Bill, I'd like to welcome you to the team. I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Tom. Members of the Select Board... Members of the Select Board, I look forward to working with everyone. I've been here about a month. The first week was interesting. I was in three different offices while the construction was going on. And, but finally, I actually have an office, and it's kind of good to get back into planning. The last three years, I was doing community and economic development in Taunton. And so it's nice to get back. Bear with me if I say city, because I've been working for a city for five years between Fall River and Taunton. But the bulk of my experience was 17 years in planning and economic development for the town of Fairhaven. You know, I was a one-stop shop. I was myself secretary, and we did everything from site plan review, special permits, subdivisions, and, you know, grants, you name it. So it's, I'm excited to be in what I've always wanted to work on, a Development Services team. And the way Stoughton has structured that is ideal, having all of us together under Development Services and Mark heading it up. It's great to be a part of a team, and I've enjoyed the first month here, even the two planning boards' meetings.
It is so nice to meet you and welcome aboard. So between you and Town Manager, what's the priority? What's the first thing he's going to be assigned to do with the first 90 days? Is it going to be the master plan or just what? Tell us. It's a cliffhanger.
One of the most important things Bill is working on right now is comparing the master plan to the urban renewal plan. As you know, and as Bill certainly knows, a lot of our grants are contingent upon us having a very active master plan. So it's very important that our urban renewal plan and our master plan are in sync with each other. So between he and Mark, they've been going through it page by page to point out where there are consistencies, where there may be conflicts that we have to address and resolve. So that is among one of the top priorities. And that was right after showing Bill where the men's room is and where the best restaurants in town are.
And that task actually was, it put something that I probably would not have done as quickly. The zoning bylaw is kind of like the rulebook, and that's what I have to, you know, I have to deal with that on a daily basis. What are the setbacks, you know, dealing with the site plan review? But the application for the consistency with urban renewal forced me to read and reread the master plan and go over and over on that, which actually was actually a good exercise to do. So, and that, so, and we've got two planning projects that have been put on hold until you had a town planner that we're working with MAPC, which would be some zoning review for Route 27. And then I think there's a zoning review project that we're going to look at reviving for 138, I believe. Those are kind of the two planning, long-range planning, and then really getting a handle and getting the site plan review and the current planning, getting those more streamlined and getting that together is where we're headed.
That's great. Do you have some? Vice Chair Cavey.
Thank you. So thank you very much for joining our community. It's really a pleasure having you. When I first started on the Select Board a couple of years ago, I've got to be honest, I didn't understand how critical issues of planning and zoning really had on a town. It just wasn't part of anything I did with my professional life, personal life. It did not take more than a couple of weeks to realize how crucial it was to understand that, and also to recognize that our town has a very strong organization for that. I think that it's, that they, even before the reorganization that you're currently under, there was a lot of collaboration that was very powerful. Now, I think it's really amplified. I wish I had an aptitude for it. I can follow along, you know, I know some of the dance steps, but I'm not really ready for, to jump into the game. But I can tell you, I've been nothing but impressed by the people who have stepped up in our community on places like the Planning Board, the zoning Board of Appeals, but also within our Town Hall. I think that the people we have in Development Services have been exceptional. And so it's just such a pleasure to have all of them and very happy to see you join the team. If there's anything that you ever need from me, let me know, but it's probably not going to be advice about planning.
Anyone else? We're all, oh, Mr. Carrera.
I did meet Bill a little informally in engineering about a week ago. And I'm glad Mark had you come in front of us so that, you know, everybody could meet you and hear the good things that I heard. And I'm glad you like zoning because I served there five and a half years, and the zoning book is the Bible. It kind of rules everything. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Bill. Loujido. I almost met you, I think, when you were on the second floor. Everybody crowded into a very, very small space. You certainly had an opportunity to meet all of the people on your team in a very interesting way. Probably saw a lot of cooperation in a different way than you might otherwise have seen it. And I'm glad that you're here, and I'm looking forward to talking with you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that you have a lot of experience and can bring a lot to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. We will see you soon.
Yes, thank you.
Bye-bye. Moving to the next agenda item, that is layout alteration for Tuscan Drive Intersection Project. So, oh, I see Mr. Tisdale is online. Hello, Mark, how are you?
How are you?
Doing great.
Good, thank you. Sorry, sorry I could not be there tonight. Had to watch my son, so I appreciate having the hybrid capability here. Would you like me to give you a little description of what we're asking the board to do tonight?
I can barely hear him, I'm sorry.
Mark, a little closer to your microphone. And what Mr. Tisdale is asking, would you like him to proceed with explaining the project?
Yes, please, Mr. Tisdale.
All right. Thank you, Deborah. As you all know, the Tuscan Drive Intersection Project, the construction is starting, we're getting closer and closer. It's been several years now for the design of that intersection. It's taken a lot of work and effort for various different reasons, but we're getting close. The project is scheduled to be advertised for bid by Mass DOT in September for $5.2 million. So thanks to your board and the Finance Committee and Town Meeting over the last few years or various articles to do with this project, we have spent some town funds, but we are now getting $5.2 million in construction for one of the worst intersections in town. As you know, in a previous Select Board meeting, your board referred the layout alterations to the Planning Board for their comment. For a project of this nature, as you can imagine, there's various parts of the layout that change due to the, you know, the different traffic improvements in the area. There's little slivers of the layout that actually change. The most important ones would be the ones around the park. As we, as you all know, we redesigned the intersection to be a more T-type intersection, signalized. With that said, a portion of the park got redefined, actually through the state legislature. We had to go through that process to do that. So now, we've been to the Planning Board. They voted unanimously to approve the layout alterations. It comes back to your board for a formal vote. I do have the motion written down on the memo, I sent you. And then Town Meeting occurs, assuming the article gets approved at Town Meeting. We come back to your board for a final order of taking, just like we did for the Safe Roots of, Safe Roots of School project, for the alterations, for the easements, things of that nature, for the project. And that's where we are now. If you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. We did have to send a notice out of public meeting, not public hearing, but public meeting per our Town Council on this, and I included that in the backup information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. Do any of my fellow board members have questions for Mr. Tisdale? That would be none. I saw a hand raised in the audience and maybe online. So Ms. Clip, yeah, would you step forward, state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Karen Flip. I live with the Frats Court, presentate meeting also. Since the beginning of this project, I've been asking all of my neighbors, since the first meeting at East Station four years ago, what about Frats Court and Brook Street? What ramifications would it have on us? They said, we didn't take you into consideration. Excuse me. If you do this, focus on a lot more traffic on Frats Court and Brook Street.
Excuse me, Ms. Clip, can you? Yes, we can't hear you. Okay. Thank you.
They didn't take into consideration the traffic and the quality of life we would have on Prats Court and Brook Street. I've been in touch with Mr. Tisdale, and he said, well, there's provisions we can do if that occurs. But we know it's going to occur. My brother used to work for GPI, the engineering company that's running this. Unfortunately, my brother died last year, and he couldn't be here at the meeting, or he's going to testify that this is a faulty plan. The neighbors in Prats Court, I've sent them all a copy of the article, and a number of them have come to me, and they've asked, would the board please consider to reduce the impact of this project that would have on our lives by not cutting through the park? Leave 27 alone and only control Tuscan Drive, Central, and 27 with lights. It is engineering, it would be safer and a better quality of life for all of us. That's what our neighbors are asking for. And I'm asking the board to reconsider this project. Just, we can't add to the project, but we can lower the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clip. Mrs. Clip. Mr. Tisdale, have you considered this suggestion, and what would the impact be?
Yeah, I've had conversations with Ms. Clip, and I appreciate her comments tremendously. And, you know, just to recap, we've been, we've had designed public hearings, we've had, you know, various, very, very many meetings on this through the past, and we've really, as we do in any project, really take the public's comments to heart. We are now in the 100% design stage of the project. So the project, at this point, is the project through DOT's viewpoint. Again, this board could vote not to continue the project, and then the project will be done. But to modify the project at this point, it would have to get reprogrammed to the tip for many more years out and not guaranteed to ever get done. Who knows what the future holds? But I do, I do really truly care about Ms. Clip's comments. I truly do, because we do not want to impact any abutting neighborhoods with this project. The point of this project is to make a net benefit for the whole community, and it is a horrible intersection. The police have commented on it. We all know that intersection. So we do want to make it better for the entire town and for the people in that area. For Prats Court, right now, again, I don't know the details, but I have had conversations with Ms. Clip. I believe traffic backs up pretty tremendously in that intersection now. The queues back up because of the geometry, it's not signalized, you know, things of that nature. So if people wanted to, you know, cut through Prats Court right now, they could because of the excessive queues. I do believe with the signalized intersection, we are improving the level of service out there, and the queues should not build up more, and people are going to want to go through the intersection and not find other routes to travel through. But I did assure her that if, you know, after a year or two of this thing up and running, if there's extra traffic going through Prats Court for some reason that we don't understand through all the analysis and design we've completed to this point, that we would come to your board, because I think there's certain measures that we could do to alleviate that. You know, there's things such as signage, there's one-way situations, the road was dead-ended for a number of years with the culvert that was out, so traffic couldn't go through that way. So there's some measures I think we could take into account if we actually do experience that extra traffic going through Prats Court. And I'd just like to restate that we really, we've really planned hard, and we've tried to take all the public's comments on this. We've had so many designed public hearings, and I really don't want to impact, you know, any of the neighborhoods in this area. We're really trying to make a good project out of this for the town and not a bad one.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, because Prats Court, it's a very narrow street anyway in and of itself, right? And before, you know, you're going to proceed with, in this direction, to continue this project to implementation, but is there a way to monitor what the traffic is now? And then you said after a year or two, if it, the traffic increases going down Prats Court, then you could take additional measures. But are you going to track that, knowing that this is, might be something you have to readdress in a year or two?
Yeah, we've, part of the data collection for this intersection and the surrounding streets are traffic counts and turning movements. Some of that is older information. This was all done, obviously, prior to COVID. So I think Ms. Clip's point is very, very important to me, truthfully. So I think we would, we would actually do a turning movement specifically for Prats Court going east and west with our traffic engineers, just so we have a baseline of what to work with. And then after a year or two of this being up and running, if there is an additional impact down there, we can compare it to that baseline count that we have, and then come back to your board with some measures that we can look to improve that issue if there is one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Oh, did you have one more thing to say, Ms. Clip? Yes.
Would it be improper for the board to make a specification that Prats Court be made a no-through street right from the beginning and not wait a year or two? A dog, child, myself in my wheelchair or my walker, I don't want to be dead. The people right now, even the residents that live there, they speed up and down that street like crazy. We know, dollars to donuts, people are going to not want to hit those three lights. They're going to cut through our street. They already do. When they built up those-- Mr. Carrera, you can speak about when they built those 100 houses back in the sand pits. What did that do to Prats Court? Right? When they put that light up right near the Hanson School, what did it do? What did it do to Prats Court? We got screwed. So please, you are the street commissioners. It's in your power, to my knowledge, after talking to some legal people, you can put this stipulation in place before the project even starts, that Prats Court be made a non-through street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clip. Any other questions and comments?
I don't really have a question, Madam Chairman. It's a comment to touch on Ms. Clip's interests. It is a bad street to go through. There is a culvert there. It's not in the greatest shape. At the least, it should be no-through truck traffic because that culvert isn't going to take the pounding. And then they're going to go up through, and then they come down, and then when they go to enter out into West Street, that's like taking your life in your hands. They come around that blind curve there, they come off of West Street, they're probably doing at least 45 when they're heading south, because there's nothing to slow them down on the other side. They're just coming down. The stop sign is on the Schumung Hill side, on the Schumung Street side. So it's something to look at and maybe no-- So it's something to look at, and maybe no-through traffic, you know? Has to be something to be looked at there, because that street's about maybe 18 feet wide.
Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Tisdale, how hard is it to us to get traffic counts done on that road now?
It's not hard, no. We can get that done. We have traffic counts for the whole intersection. We just don't have the turning movements, I believe, going down Pratt's Court based on today's numbers.
Okay, I think that would be helpful for us to know that, if we can get that done now and then have it available for when the intersection has concluded, to then generate that count and see the difference. I would caution with just putting a street sign that says no-through traffic, because if that has to be reviewed, that is a town road, doesn't matter what condition it's in, and everybody has the right to use it. All right? So it's difficult to go and have the police department write tickets on something that's unenforceable. All right? So, I mean, trucks, you can definitely do a no-truck route, because it's just not safe for a truck. You know, the hairpin turn down there, a tractor trailer is going to have a tough time. But I think if we're going to do this, and I totally agree, you know, we have a job to do is protect our neighborhoods, but I think we should do it with facts and not, you know, what might happen. I mean, that could open up Pandora's Box, too. So I think, Mark, if we can get those traffic counters out there sooner than later, let's get that done now and know what it was like before construction, and maybe probably even a midpoint during construction and after, and just get those counts. That'll help us. And if that's the case, you know, we could also do maybe a one-way, which would be easier as well. And so I think we have some options, but I would rather find out what the traffic counts are. If there's nothing to worry about, and the traffic counts haven't increased, you know, then there's really not as much that we can do. But we don't know that. Look what happened on Walnut Street, you know? When we officially put the lights in, you know, that was the way they could get across Park Street instead of going the back way and through the center of town. So we created, we solved one problem, created another, really. And we never had a problem or complaints from the neighborhood until the set of lights went in. I agree that it does help traffic flow, but in another way, it created another one for those residents, and there we are, spending quite a bit of money right now to try to calm that traffic that didn't exist before. So sometimes we can be well-intentioned, but then after we get into it, we realize, well, we should have known about that, you know, and build it in. So that would be my only suggestion, where time is on our side right now, Mark, if we can get those counters out now, see what that is, and then, you know, do it again during construction to see how many people are using it as an alternative route, because that'll show us that, and then after to find out how much is continuing, if any. If it goes back to the original numbers, we know there hasn't been an impact. And then following construction, I'd like to see the difference of those numbers from the midpoint of the construction. And I think that'll really give us a window as to what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I certainly don't have an issue with getting that information collected. Again, we really want to make this a benefit for the entire town in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
That intersection is heavily traffic. It's a lot of traffic that goes down, a lot of trucks go there. The streets are narrow within itself, and Pratt's Courts is more narrow than the other three that we're talking about, Canton Street and Central Street and Tusca Drive. But Vice Chair Cavey, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, it was also more of a question than my turn into a comment. I certainly don't want to create too much more work at the same time. You know, obviously, everyone, I think everyone understands it's important not to shoot from the hip on this. So I think, you know, in the past, we have come to recommendations on how to address some of these road safety issues. I do recall having, over the years, gotten recommendations from the engineering department, but I've also received recommendations from the police department. Is there a sort of a logic to who we get those recommendations from? And would it be possible for there to be a coordination in this case between perhaps Sergeant O'Connor, a street safety officer, with the engineering department, so we can kind of get the full perspective from a couple of different folks that will have to deal with these roads in different contexts?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Cavey. Certainly, the police have been heavily involved with this project from the beginning, just like Public Works and smaller town departments. We will collect that information with the police, hand in hand. They can review it, come back to your board during, prior to construction, if we have time. I think we should be able to collect the information before that, then during the midpoint, and then afterwards. And if there's any recommendations that the police, you know, do recommend that your board make for improvements or changes to that Pratt's Court, we'll let you know, for sure.
Perfect. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for looking into this.
Thank you very much, Mark, and thank you very much for your comments, Mrs. Clip. See you soon on that. So you need a vote on this, and you need us to read something into the public record?
Yeah, it is on the memo, if you have it.
Is that the one that says notice of public meeting, or the next one that says order of alterations of layout?
It's the one that says memo.
Oh, you have it? Okay, Vice Chair Cavey.
Steve, want this here?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
The requested motion, I see it now.
Okay. I move that it is hereby ordered, move that it is hereby ordered, the layout of the public way, Tusca Drive, Canton Street, and Central Street be altered in the manner depicted on the plan entitled Alteration Plan of Tusca Drive, Canton Street, and Central Street, Route 27 in Stoughton, MA, Norfolk County, prepared for the Town of Stoughton, dated December 8, 2021, revised September 12, 2022, prepared by Greenman Pedersen Incorporated, and described in accordance with said plan in an order of alteration of layout submitted herewith, and that the order of alteration as executed by this board and the layout plan be immediately placed on filed, on file with the town clerk and presented to town meeting for acceptance.
Thank you, Mr. Cavey. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, unanimous decision. Anything else that you would need in this regard, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, one small request. If you could sign an original for me, the orders in the package you received, I do have to have that on file with the town clerk seven days prior to town meeting.
Yes. Duly noted, and will do. Mr. Carrera, you had a question?
Do we want to add in any of the concerns that Mr. McCrisky said about doing the counts later on, or that'll just be something that we'll rely on, Mark, to follow up on?
Yeah, I'm good with that. We could do it later.
Okay, Mr. Gito and then Mr. McCrisky.
Go ahead, no, you can go first.
Mr. McCrisky said he's good relying on Mr. Tisdale to follow up at those data points and provide an update to the select board, and Mr. Gito was saying, I didn't hear.
Saying the same thing.
Oh, he was saying the same thing. Great. Okay.
I promise. I don't break my promises.
No, we know that. All righty. Moving right along to the next item is Brian Kane on the line. Mr. Kane, which is our guest speaker, Executive Director of the MBTA Advisory Board. Okay. I don't hear his voice, so we will table and move right along to our next agenda item, come back to that agenda item to see if he's online. If not, then we'll table it to another date. The next agenda item is Town Manager's Goals and Objectives: Discussion and Completion of the Document. So several meetings ago, we talked about the format that we were going to use, the template that we were going to use, and we were going to have a meeting to discuss what your goals and objectives would be for the next 12 months. In my world, we have what your typical job description is. In this case, it's Town Manager. It's running the town, so you're the COO of the town. But the goals would be few. It would be, it could be something, increase revenue. And then what are those subparts to increase in revenue? It would be control and cost. But before we start with the goals, and I would like to hear from each of the select board members, do you believe, Mr. Town Manager, we have a revenue problem or an expense problem? Because over the last couple of months, at each of our meetings, we are talking about various things, like economic development. We're talking about infrastructure, underground infrastructure. So your new, fresh set of eyes, and this would be helpful in identifying what your goals would be for the next 12 months.
Madam Chair, our challenges are many, but the solutions are pretty clear. And the direct answer to your question is, we have a revenue problem and we have an expense problem. A great example of that is the public hearing that we're going to be having in a few weeks on solid waste. Due to almost a decade of modest increases, combined with the same period of time where we've had massive expense increases, we've got a revenue problem in that we don't charge enough, and we allow big stockpiles of rubbish, trash, and solid waste that we don't manage. We have an expense problem in that we pay for all those things without charging the customer. So I can give you half a dozen or more examples that are substantial, where we have a revenue issue and that we're not billing enough. We have an expense issue because the costs have skyrocketed. 10 years ago, we got paid for recycling. Now we pay for recycling. And if we can fix those half a dozen issues, then we can not minimize, but we can end our dependence on free cash to balance our budget. So the goals and objectives that I've submitted to the members this evening are almost all designed to check the box on those major issues that can change the financial complexion of the Town of Stoughton. In addition, I fully accept this format that you've submitted as part of the Town Manager's basic job requirements. So I'm not saying either or. I'm saying to the form that you have presented or that you've given to me, I accept every one of those goals and objectives categories as being implicit in the job description. The one I've submitted to you are the goals and objectives that I have set for myself to achieve this year, and I'm very much willing to attach those to your form as well. You know the old saying on Apollo 13, is failure is not an option. We have to achieve these things this year. And as Vice Chairman Cavey pointed out to me a month ago, and he was so right, these day-to-day requirements of the Town Manager's job have to be done, but we've got a great staff to help us do those things, starting with my colleague, Mr. Tisdale. But these things here, which are defining fiscal '24 and '25, have also need to be achieved. And again, I have no objection of these being attached to these and being measured on both.
Thank you very much. A longstanding goal that we have is to eliminate the reliance on free cash. So that is one item I would like to discuss and put on the table as a goal. With that said, I would like to open the mics and recognize my fellow board members to see, oh, I see Vice Chair Cavey has raised his hand. Vice Chair Cavey.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just start with the areas of responsibility that we have listed here. I do want to kind of keep that format. So I was going through your list to see if I could kind of make, you know, sort of fit them in so that there wasn't anything awkward about it. And all of them fit easily into at least one category, but true to form, you know, sometimes you're killing two or three birds with one stone. So some of them, I think, could probably fit into a couple of different categories, and we could just put it wherever it kind of makes sense. So I think we're in alignment. The goals that you have set for yourself are excellent. There's not really too much, in my view, room for improvement, for at least my own expectations. The only one that, the only addition I would ask is under Human Resource Management, that we include job descriptions in that. I know that's, you've been crystal clear that is a priority of yours. I know you've been working on it, so I don't see that as being a stretch, but...
May I speak to that, Madam Chair, through you, Mr. Cavey? Couldn't agree with you more, and let me tell you how we've addressed that in the short term and how we can address it in the long term. In the current job descriptions, it has a category that says other duties as assigned. So for the people who we have either hired or promoted or transferred since I've been here, under other issues as assigned, we put the details of their job description. Now, why do we do that? In order to redo the entire job description, it has to be bargained, and that will take well beyond 2023 and into 2024. So we're accomplishing what we need to accomplish by adding a page or two to the existing job descriptions, which are very long and very general in nature, with the specific duties of each person we hire. First, since Bill, when we hired him, the town planner, we said, please reference other duties as assigned, and put the detailed duties that he's responsible for, the measurements that we're going to use to measure him, and the measurements we're going to use to declare success or failure. So it's kind of a shortcut around working with Jack, Jack, the attorney?
Jack Dolan.
Jack Dolan, to restructure the job descriptions at the very beginning, because they have to be impact bargained, and every single one of them. And that's going to take quite a long time, and we'll do it one department at a time.
He doesn't have it.
So it wouldn't be a goal and objective that'll be fully... I could say it's being achieved now through that shortcut we're taking, other assigned duties, but in terms of rewriting the entire format for job descriptions, I was really disappointed to learn that they all have to be impact bargained.
Sometimes we come across these, these issues that are outside of our control, but we bargain contracts every three years, right? It's a cycle for three years. So worst-case scenario, three years, we should have this all done.
So we write them now, and as every contract comes up, we'll make it part of the new CBA. In the meantime, we'll use that existing section, other issues as assigned, to put the detailed responsibilities of each employee.
Okay. Fair enough. In that case, we are, we have a constraint outside of our control here, and I'm comfortable leaving that off, and we'll just, as I said, I'm comfortable with all the goals you've set. These are all in line with what I'd like to see. I feel comfortable fitting them into the areas that we already have without any issues, and so I've got nothing to add here. Thank you very much for doing my homework for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cavey.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the Town Manager. Did I miss an email on any study of the solid waste that you're going to discuss and what you just mentioned earlier?
An email?
I'd like to review any data we have on the solid waste.
Sure.
I have data that I had put together back with a previous superintendent of Public Works, met with the folks at CMAS, looked at different dumping options, collection possibilities, and then actually having people that want to pay for recycling, you know, that's now another unfunded mandate, you know, and I would want to recycle as well. another unfunded mandate, you know, and I would want to recycle as well, but if it's going to cost us more money and we don't have to do it, then we put that into the single stream.
Joe, I have not seen an email. I'm thirsting for that type of information.
Well, you're talking about a public meeting about it.
We're doing a public hearing on a rate, on a rate restructuring.
Okay, where is that? I've never seen it. And if we're going to make that decision...
You'll get information prior to the public hearing. We had a definition of the problem information session last Tuesday night. We didn't provide any solutions. We just provided information on where are we financially.
Okay, because I may be able to add to that, because we did this before. We have several options that will save us money, that we had already agreed with CMAS to do that on how we dump. We can dump in Braintree, which is a close to Hall for us. It can be, it could be long, but it saves us time overall. The rate would go up a little bit, but the money we would save in fuel, wear and tear, and getting back on the street, and getting the roots done faster, that it actually could save us money, so...
So Scott, through you, Madam Chair, Scott has got some ideas as well. So may I suggest that the night of the public hearing, we delay that for another few weeks, and we use that evening for a board meeting to show you what we do have, because it's clear to me, I've asked for everything that's been prepared on this, and I don't have that.
No, you wouldn't, because it never got pen to paper, because the former superintendent didn't decide that he didn't want to do it. So I just, what concerns me when we have a public hearing, we bring the residents in to give them information, we should be done and present that for knowledge, so it's knowledgeable. Everybody knows what we're doing, but to have a meeting like that, and we haven't exhausted avenues yet, and I think that it's time to us to go back to the folks down at the CMAS partnership, who have always been willing to work with us, to see what we can do, because it just doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense to talk about these things until we know all of our options and say, this is the end result, what we've got to do. Because it may be, there are, and I know many people, one sitting in the audience tonight, basically puts out a bag a week, and they're paying the same rate as somebody that's going crazy, you know, and it might be time that we go to pay-as-you-throw.
I, I'm very open to that, just so you know. Everything anybody has on it, I'd be very, this has been published for almost two months now.
Okay, well, again, I don't watch that stuff. I watch what comes into my email relative to this.
This is the first, I'm hearing about it. We're losing over $1,002,000 a year in solid waste. And the reason we did the public information before the public hearing is so that people were informed, consistent with our promise of transparency and communication, that we have a problem. So we've defined the problem for the residents. Mr. Gito was at that meeting. We said, here is what we're paying versus here is what we're charging. I mean, it's a simple problem to understand. Here, operationally, are the difficulties in that we know that there are people coming from outside of Stoughton to put their bureaus and their couches and their mattresses on lots in Stoughton, and nobody's objecting to it because it's not costing any money. We know that we're paying to do recycling, and we're not charging anything. So all we did at the information session, and we purposely scheduled it before public hearing, so people had a clear definition of the problem. Right now, as early as this morning, I met with Bill and with Paul to start talking about solutions. I'll now invite everybody that has information to join in. It's going to require a multi-pronged resolution to this problem, but I, from that presentation, and I'd ask Mr. Gito to speak on it, our objective was to define the problem, not to come up with a solution, that we have to come up with before a public hearing. That was a public information center. There are people in town that don't know we have a solid waste problem, and it's taking $1,002,000 out of our operating budget subsidized by taxpayers. That was the only objective of the public information session, was to define the problem. We'll now work on the solutions. But I think what I'll, what I'd like to suggest, I'll put the public information meeting that is scheduled for, I, children, I think, May 2nd?
May 2nd.
May 2nd? We'll delay that and have that be a discussion on possible solutions.
All right, well, I wouldn't be able to be at that meeting on the 2nd. I'm scheduled to be in DC.
We can meet offline.
But yeah, I'll talk, because I'd like to have Paul Jaffoon there, because I think I heard some things that might be different than what I was told, and I just want to validate that as well.
It could be.
So thank you.
And I don't, I don't want to pretend to have the solution. That's the phase we're entering into right now. But the public is thirsting for information on, do we have a problem? They now know we have a problem. They'll be ready to hear our recommendations on a solution. Scott's got ideas. I'd love to hear those ideas, because I don't think a rate increase alone is going to solve the problem. There has to be substantial operating changes. We're operating like a transfer and recycling facility, except we don't own a transfer and recycling facility.
Well, there's things we can do there as well, but we need to, to get the audience. And story, I wouldn't, I can't go anything with now, but I'll talk to you offline.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that.
And going back to the goals and objectives, Mr. Gito, did you have a goal that you would like to put on the table?
I, I have some, some things I'd like to put on the table.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
I'd like to go back to the last conversation just for a second.
Oh, yes, yes, please.
And that is, that we have two things going on. One is, we have a revenue problem. We have things that people have to put more money into if we are to continue to operate fiscally responsibly in the town. We're talking about water, sewer, and trash. And if we don't pay for those things that are right in front of us, if, if the residents don't pay for those, then the money comes from the operating budget of the town. And what that means is that some of the things that we say that we are going to do, we're either going to do it less well, or stumble from time to time in delivering things, or we're going to have to curtail some of the things that we're doing. And we have to have adult discussions about those issues. So that's one part of it. The other part is, how do we change the operation to make it more efficient, less costly, so that those rates can come down? That may take a longer period of time to get to that point, but that's another part of the issue. But we have found that we have, with a new Town Manager, looking at what we have in terms of operations and operating costs, we have known for several months now that we have some major problems. So we can't say, oh, we're not going to address the issues that we have in front of us. We can say, we can address those issues from a fiscal perspective, and then we can address them in another way from an operational perspective, to change what the costs are going to be in order to provide that service. So we shouldn't be thinking that we're not going to address part of the problem until we solve the entire thing, because that's not going to be terribly helpful. I'll get off of that point.
Mr. Gito, if you have any indication? I couldn't have said that any better. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you, Lou.
No, you did say that. I just repeated it.
Not that clearly. Thank you for that.
The, you put together the items that are on your wall. I think that we've all had a chance to look at those items. I was impressed. I think you've put them into categories. I don't have any problem with the categories. I don't know whether or not there's any other categories that we should be dealing with. There's one item under communication and transparency that I would add, and that is, we need to improve our website and have all the departments participate in putting their information on the site that's up to date, and that includes all of the reports that we have been provided over the years, so that the people in the town know what we have, what we've been told, and we can begin to use those reports to do something to make the town better. But if we are going to be able, if we're going to have the support of the taxpayers, we have to talk with them like you are doing, and let them know what it is that our community needs to do in order to improve. So however you want to put that in your, your tasks, I know that you want to educate the people on using the website, but I would suggest that we look to other communities. I mentioned Easton before. It is a much more intuitive system than we have. I'm not suggesting that we replicate that. I'm just suggesting that we make sure that when we're finished, that we have a system that people can, can go to, feel comfortable about using, and we can, we can communicate with them in a better way. And we're going to have to do that if we're going to be able to get the resources we need to do in order to, to make the improvements that we know we need to make.
Got it.
Yes, Mr. Coulter?
Other?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gito.
I'd like to comment on that, because there's something I'd like to invite you to as well. We're getting a demonstration on Thursday of a software package that I'm very familiar with. We use it in my previous position. It's called ClearGov. Anybody can look it up on site, on their website. It's the most extraordinary financial package you'll ever see. It's purely for clear government, transparency and openness. It takes every bit of our financial status as a town and breaks it down into the simplest non-accounting terms, so that any citizen can see in very clear terms where we are and how we compare to like towns our size. It does everything by revenue per capita, expenses per capita, charges for solid waste, charges for everything. They break everything down into what I call my sixth-grade terms that I understand, and it's the most incredible financial tool for communicating to citizens exactly where our town is, where it was, and where it's going. So we're getting a demonstration on that Thursday. I'd invite you to join us for that if you're, if you're available.
You may very well see me there.
I'd appreciate that.
I believe that's the same software DOR uses as well. Yeah. And it's so easy to read, you can look at everything. It's unbelievable, yeah.
The, the second item, going back to Mr. Cavey's point about job descriptions, I don't say this in a way to disparage anyone, but I'm going to say it. And that is, that I've heard for, this is my second, I guess I'm into my, almost my second full year here, almost, almost, and I've heard that we are on the cusp of having job descriptions, but we need to bargain them. I would like you to give me five examples of communities that have job descriptions. Give me the names of the towns, and give me a contact person in that town that can tell me how they got to the place where they are. Because we've got to get there, and I don't want to hear three years from now that we're still trying to impact bargain. This is something that just has got to happen. I don't say that in any disrespect to you.
Oh, I don't feel it, Mr. Gito. I've been here four months. Mr. Gito, job descriptions are among one of the easiest things we should do?
I mean, what I'm talking about is letting people know how they're going to be evaluated. I mean, I'm...
I agree completely.
That's what I, you call them whatever you want.
I agree completely. And the gentleman who interviewed here earlier has got a job description. He knows exactly how he's going to be evaluated. Unfortunately, the town had an HR director years ago who did job descriptions for everybody. And each job description was like 20 pages long, and they were meaningless. They, they repeated themselves. There were duplicate paragraphs. They didn't make sense. And so, using the point you made earlier, that there's a short-term solution and there's a long-term solution. The short-term solution is to use the provisions in the existing job descriptions, which were bargained and are acceptable, the section that says other duties, that give us exactly what we're looking for in a job description, that clearly defines that specific job. So that's the short-term solution. The long-term solution, whether we, whether it's good news or bad news, is DLR requires us to bargain those job descriptions. And so we couldn't do that this round because they're all expired. I inherited eight expired contracts, and we'll get six of them done by town meeting. But we're not losing any ground, because we are adding that section that specifies what everybody's duties are and how they're being measured in every single person we hire. We can also do it for existing employees now. And I've, I've met with HR, I've met with Jack Dolan. He's been assigned that task. We're paying him to do it. But unfortunately, it can't be, the new format can't be part, cannot be adopted until we bargain it and mitigate it. Every union's going to look for something in return for change of conditions, which is a new job description format from a 20-page format that literally says very little to a three-page format that is right down to the detail of that person's job, that person's measurements, that person's rewards. So I know exactly what you're looking for, and I agree with you completely. We need it, and we deserve it. We have it now with the short-term measure, and I'd be happy in the meantime to send over a truck with the job descriptions for each person, which will take a whole truck. So we've got job descriptions. They're just really bad. They don't describe the job that people are doing. And I don't know how we got here, but it's where we are. But we've addressed it on a short-term basis, and we've hired Jack Dolan under his monthly fee to rewrite every job description, person by person by person by person. So it's not like we're putting it off. It's underway, but I'd like to say we'll have it done in FY '24. And I can say to you that we're meeting the objective, which is make sure people know what the heck they're supposed to do. But it won't be in the format that any of us, that all of us want until we can negotiate it. And I'm sorry for what has been told over the years. I'm a business analyst. This is where we are. This is how we're fixing it.
You know more than I do, my friend, and I know that. And I know that that's where you want to go.
And I understand your frustration.
Right.
Thank you, Lou.
I, I will drop into your office one day and take a look at some samples that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. Mr. Carrara?
I'd like to touch on the job description market, too. Mr. Coulter, should I take that three-ring binder that I was given that's about this thick and toss it?
You just may want to put it on the shelf with the other four volumes.
I mean, what did, what did we waste?
It's useless.
All that time that we had four people working on it, and there was no payment, supposedly. But I was handed a book this thick when I asked, where are the job descriptions? It was right before you came. And this, this has been a bone of contention with me, and I'm not... And this has been a bone of contention with me, and I'm not too happy with the fact that it's, everything's got to be bargained and all that. Your job is this, that's what it says, you want it, you hire them. They want to fight it, they want it, then I guess they don't work yet. Simple as that. I just don't understand what the big minutia is over job descriptions, that this town needs it. Alls I know is for the last 15 years, alls we do is tailor job descriptions for people who walk through the door. Oh, you don't have enough experience? Well, we'll take that page out, and what can you do? Oh, that's good enough. Add that in. And that's good for the town?
No, it's bad, it's bad, Scott. Let me explain, maybe I'm not being clear. The person coming in the door never has a problem with the job description. Never. You never have a problem. It was the previous director of HR, not our current manager, who cut and paste, pasted job descriptions from the state, so they weren't even from another municipality, and created four volumes of job descriptions which were adopted by our eight or nine union units. So that was cast in stone at that moment. I think it was about six or seven years ago, if I'm right. Since that time, yourself, Mr. Gito, a lot of other people are asking for professional job descriptions. A professional job description that I wrote in business for years is no more than two and a half to three pages. And it has primary responsibilities, secondary responsibilities, measurements, rewards, who you report to, what your job title is, and then the last section says, and other duties as assigned. It's really pretty simple. It could be, everybody could be in one book, two or three pages, and it's very definitive. The difficulty we've got, and they're not being uncooperative, is that over the years, pay scales have been assigned to those jobs. And the pay scales and the job titles are all over the place as well, as you've said many times. And so it needs a complete revamping where everyone, the good news is, people in this building and people throughout the town, they know their job and they're doing it well. I'm very pleased with the staff. The problem is that for us to change anything under Massachusetts labor laws, we have to do impact bargaining. The unions have a right to say, if you're going to change this one line, then there's an impact on us, and we have to bargain that. Now, given that we've got eight labor unions that needed to be done by July 1st, we certainly couldn't impact bargain them this time around. But I assure you that I understand the seriousness of it. It drives me out of my mind. I don't mind putting job descriptions in here at all as a measurement because it's an ongoing duty, it's an ongoing responsibility. We just need to understand that, like the solid waste thing, it can't be fixed in a year. It's an ongoing process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Before we move forward, I see two young ladies in the audience. Are you here for any particular reason, an agenda item? I just wanted to make sure that we cover your questions because...
We see certified mail stating we're going to discuss the renovations for the Central Street, Camden Street area in Tausen.
Oh, so I believe we had that discussion before you arrived.
Yeah, the letter said 8:20.
And we started when?
We started at about 8:30 and finished at probably 8:45.
No, we got here about 8:10.
Mark Tisdale was on here when we did it?
Yeah, we kept going when he was talking about Brad Street.
That was it? That was the discussion? Were you here when Mr.?
I missed it.
It is on smack for them to see.
Yes, can you please?
Time's up, it's going to be done.
Okay. Did you want to have a summary of what we discussed and what the resolution, or did you want to approach the table and introduce yourself and ask what your, and state what your concerns are?
I want to have some, it's right in front of me.
Oh.
Contact Mark, he'll talk.
Okay. You could also, a third option is you could contact our engineer, Mark Tisdale, and he can provide you with a summary. We can give you the telephone number, and you can call him in the morning. Okay, his name is Mark Tisdale. And Sheila, would you happen to have the phone? I don't have the work telephone number.
Call 2781-401-13. And go to the venue, get an E D insurance department.
And you can say that Deborah Roberts suggested that you call to get a summary of the decision?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. There are two other gentlemen in the back. I just want to make sure that...
Same reason, who's same reason?
Same reason.
I got a question. Do you know when it's going to start, the job, the work in Tausen time?
I think it was September, Mr. Carrara's saying. But you can do the same thing, call Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If you stick around for a minute, I'll bring the phone numbers over to you.
What did you say, Vice Chair?
If anybody needs the number, you stick around for a moment, I'll bring it over to you.
I just gave the number.
There you go, too? Okay.
You gave them the, just a minute, young ladies, I think we have a direct number. Just a minute. Vice Chair Kavy is looking it up right now.
Steve, I got it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kavy. That was so very helpful. And thank you, Mr. Gito. That was so very helpful. Okay, moving right along, we're talking about goals and objectives for our town manager, Mr. Coulter. Oh, Vice Chair Kavy had an addition.
So we've kind of beaten a dead horse with the job descriptions, though I think it's a poor conversation to have. When I was growing up, I lived outside of New York City, and my best friend was a child actor, and he's in a couple of movies. Every now and then I see him in a show, even to this day. But he was telling me, you know, all the jobs he would have were all union jobs. And, you know, he was telling me, it's unbelievable. I mean, like if a light burns out, like, everything stops because the only person who's allowed to change the light bulb is an electrician. That's it, right? So some of it, you know, some of it's just sort of out of really our, at least my day-to-day, you know, the way I kind of think things work in the world for me. It seems like in our previous job descriptions, there was this sort of ambiguous other, other things that allowed everybody to kind of get along with their day without having to be too specific. And it would, in this case, might allow somebody other than an electrician to change the light bulb. But the fact is that I think the unions are, they benefit, the people who are doing the work benefit by having very clear tasks. We, as, you know, management or use management as an oversight, benefit by being able to hold people accountable to those. So in the long run, you know, it makes sense that everybody would want it. In the short term, I understand that it's, there's a constraint here, and the workers have rights, and they ought to have the opportunity to exercise those rights in a bargain, so we'll get there. With regard to the goals that we have in front of us, though, I don't want to, I mean, I will make a motion, very happy to amend it, if anybody has anything they want to add, but I will just make a motion to adopt the goals provided by Tom Coulter as the goals for 2023 for the town manager, and that we will incorporate these into the format that we already have, to include these as fiscal 2023 goals, and retain all of the annual goals that are in that list. Oh, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. With, so, the addition is under communication and transparency, add an item F, website improvements. That, so, this is, Mr. McCrisky, will you second that as well? Okay.
Also, add mine, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the eliminate the dependence on free cash.
That's on there.
Not completely eliminate it, but...
It's item B, under finance and economic development, reduce dependence on free cash.
Good.
So that one was already there.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we have all those.
So would you like me, Mr. Kavy, through you, Madam Chair, would you like me to, I took notes on those amendments, have it re-typed tomorrow, and then send out an email to all of you about these objectives for FY '23?
Well, I would actually just, I'll work with you to do this, but I would just take exactly these things, incorporate them into the document that we already have.
Okay.
And so long as the rest of the board is comfortable with it, I'll send it to everybody. Just, but we're going to keep all of the annual goals, and we're going to replace the goals that Mr. Coulter has provided us. We're going to substitute these for what are listed in the document we have as 2021 fiscal year 2021 goals. These would be our fiscal 2023 goals.
We have one more comment before we finalize it. Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I've gone through these over and over, and goals, and goals, and rewriting goals, and goals not being voted for, and goals this, goals that. And I would say, in all my years, goals don't define a person. Person defines the job. And, Mr. Town Manager, just keep doing what you're doing. No, no, listen, you know, I really don't know how, I don't really know how to put this into words because I've got to say, I've served with a lot of town managers, and they've all had their highs and lows, some I wish were never here. But when you started, and this started, and I just, I think it bears repeating, is, and the vice chair will remember, that three people into the interview, as I said, I found my guy. And he said, really? So it's, you have broken the mold in so many different ways of what we've had in this town. You've been tested, dearly tested, just the highest of Stoughton standards, you know, in recent months with some of the things that have been here. But you continue to bring to our attention things that really weren't made available to us on the severity of certain issues that have blown up and have had a couple of spirited meetings with employees. But again, you rose to that challenge. So it, when I look at goals, I really look at goals as a part of what would be nice if we could do all these great things. But when it's all said and done, your job changes five times a day, five times a week. You have shortened vacation in your brief time here and let your wife go ahead, and you stayed here. You have looked at the possibility on that same vacation, coming back early, which I don't like because you need your time away. You've got to be able to defrag, recharge the batteries and all that. But I think when it's things like this that happen and they're out of the ordinary, the people in our position here need to recognize that talent and that commitment to the job. And I say that, you know, goals are great, but sometimes goals are not achievable because of the work that brings you down and handcuffs you or puts a cinder block on your foot, and you're dragging that around as well. So, and I trust in the short time that you've been here and what you've done is miraculous, you know, compared to your predecessors. So just keep doing what you're doing. If something falls short, I'll be here to say, well, it's understandable. We had this, this, and this, you know? And unfortunately, some people, when they look at goals, they just look at black and white and say, well, this right here didn't get accomplished. And what you did, or what a town manager did, you know, working on another project, took away from that time. So if we fall short, there's still that overall of the job, and everybody knows the job a town manager does, how they communicate with us, except for phone calls. Sometimes people miss phone calls, but that's okay, we can deal with that another way. But no, I just, because it bothers me. If these things with goals bother me because there's more to goals than just hitting plateaus. It's what you've done the whole year to balance the town, to work, you've got to be everything. You've got to be a school teacher, you've got to be a human resources person, you have to be a consultant, you have to be a life coach, you know, in there, and it just, so I just wanted to get that made because I've heard this over and over, and, you know, and even in just the past few years, you know, the way that this issue has been dealt with, I just, I don't think was right, you know, but it just happens. So I could go on, but I'm not going to. I just felt that I had to make a comment about that, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I comment on goals for a second? I think it's important. I really appreciate the time that the members are spending on goals and objectives. In my long business career, I would say the three most important things I did as a CEO was an operating budget, job descriptions, and clear objectives. And it's always served me well. It's what I enjoy doing the most. I really appreciate the time you spent on this evening, and I intend to accomplish all of them. You know, look at what this building has accomplished in the midst of a three-month rehab due to the flood. Didn't miss a stroke, and that's a testament to the people in this building. I'll share with you a little secret that you may not know. Every year, Christmas week, I write a letter to myself, and I set six objectives for the following year. They're about family, faith, fitness, finance, and fun. And I write a goal down in every one of those areas, and then underneath it, I write an action plan for how I'm going to achieve it. Fitness could be running a marathon. Finance could be a net worth measurement. Family could be a vacation or visiting colleges together. Every Christmas, and then after I write it, I put it in an envelope, I address it to myself, and I sign across the seal. So I can't open it, I can't cheat. And then I mail it to myself, and I open it in front of my adult children every year. And that determines whether someone's a shaker or a faker. You either said you're going to do it, and you did it, or you said you were going to do it, and you didn't do it. So I'm all for what we're doing tonight. This is the most important part in my business career of what we do. Clear job descriptions and measurements, clear goals and objectives so we can measure success, and a clear functional operating budget. So I want to thank all of you for the time you've put into this, for the input you've given me. I'm all for it. Let's get it done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. Can we table this for one second and go to our next agenda item? We have a guest speaker on the line that's been waiting. Well, no, I was at, that was because the young lady and the gentleman was in the audience. Oh, that was funny.
We do have a motion in a second. I think we just close the vote. If we just vote, I think we can be done with it.
Okay.
Are you okay with the vote?
Yes, I am.
Go for it.
The motion.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. So the agendas are set, and Vice Chair Kavy will put it in the template, and all's right with the world.
Circulate to everybody. If anybody has any problems with that duty, let me know.
All's good with the world. Mr. Kane, Brian Kane, Executive Director of the MBTA Advisory Board, are you on the line?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Hello. Thank you so very much for joining us, and my apologies for the technical issues earlier on about 8:30 PM when you were to be on. So you're on tonight to talk about the MBTA, that's the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, capital investment plan for fiscal years 2024 to 2028, and the impact to the town of Stoughton and our immediate... town of Stoughton and our immediate area.
Yes, ma'am, at your invitation, thank you. So, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Town Manager Coulter, thank you for having me tonight. I apologize for not being on camera, not being visual, or not being visual, but rather being audio. I was watching you on still the public access up until this point, and I got to say, job descriptions are not easy tonight. I don't pity you in those discussions. Let me start by saying that I, my childhood best friend grew up in Stoughton, lives in Stoughton now, he lived on Cross Street, I think, but spent a lot of time in Stoughton as a kid. And my family and I love towns far, so we try to get down to Stoughton as often as possible. The MBTA CIP that the Chair mentioned is a $9.2 billion capital spending plan over the next five years. It is principally funded through borrowing. About 47% of the total money that will be spent is money that is being, going to be borrowed by the MBTA itself, they borrow about $600 million per year. The remaining, of the remaining money, about 40% is from the federal government in terms of grants, or in terms of low-interest loans, and the remaining 12% are provided by the Commonwealth through the transportation bond bill. The money is then spent on a variety of programs and projects across the network. Actually, in this capital plan, commuter rail is the biggest single area in which money will be spent, that includes Stoughton, of course. And it is, unfortunately, rather disappointing for me to say that it seems like the MBTA is doubling down on its legacy diesel fleet. There are multiple programs to not only overhaul existing diesel locomotives and coaches that are pulled by them, but also to procure new diesel coaches. There were several organizations, including the MBTA Advisory Board, which is made up of the cities and towns, such as Stoughton, that were hoping that the T would accelerate its advancement towards electrification, especially on rail, and especially, quite frankly, on the Providence Line, which is obviously near the Stoughton Line. Specifically, in terms of Stoughton, there's actually not too much in this plan specifically for the town. The closest thing that I could find was a, some work on a spillway dam in Canton that is currently causing some flooding onto the Stoughton Line. With that said, there are several global bridge projects, including work on the Canton Viaduct, and several other bridges and culverts across the system that will likely cause some work in Stoughton. There are also some projects to do some work at termini of all existing rail termini, including the, the end of the Stoughton Line, so likely you'll see some work there. There's lots of work going on to sort of mitigate environmental damage, or potential environmental damage from idling commuter rail coaches. There's also lots of money to do basic tack and station maintenance across the system. So, I could get into incredibly specific detail on these, but I know that it is 20 past nine, and you have had a long meeting. So, why don't I just wrap it there, Madam Chair, and if there are specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Executive Director Kane, so Brian Kane.
You're very welcome.
Do we have any questions to Mr. Kane? I have a far-reaching question on the table.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I just want to see, what are our opportunities? We're talking about the $9.2 billion capital plan, and internally, internal to Stoughton, we have a train station, a train station that was owned by MBTA, and now it's owned by the town of Stoughton, and it does need a lot of work and rehabilitation. How do we get this idea moved forward to talk about if there's an opportunity for some supplemental funding to help us rehab that? Far-reaching question.
That's a great question, and you are not the only Select Board Chair in the region to ask it. There are several of your colleagues across the region that have the same question. And, and based on that, the MBTA Advisory Board has been working with the T to get them to develop a special fund just for local commuter rail stations, specifically stations such as Stoughton, such as Ashland, such as other areas on the north and the south side. So, it is a big deal. I should add, by the way, that Chairman, Chairperson Roberts, rather, excuse me, is also the Vice Chair of the MBTA Advisory Board's Operating Budget Oversight Committee, and it is through that, that she brings lots of her private sector knowledge on finance to bear, which we're very appreciative of. And so, I guess to answer your question, ma'am, the, the answer is, please, continue to work with us, we, we value your expertise, and, and it really is critical. And it is through working together as blocks of cities and towns for common goals such as station improvements, that we can actually get things done. I will be presenting the combined city and town requests to the MBTA Board of Directors at the end of May, and you can be certain that the, the need of local commuter rail stations, such as those of Stoughton's, will, will come up.
Thank you, Executive Director Kane, and thank you for those kind words. I enjoy being on that board. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions? I know time is getting late. Oh, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Executive Director Kane, thanks for being here. Got to say that I am impressed, and I'm, I'm hoping that you, you offered to be here, and our Chair didn't drag you here. But as long as I've been on this board, we've never had anybody of your stature join us on a call. We've had a tumultuous past with the T on multiple issues, and I think that, you know, our Chair representing our board is going to help us and help the T overall. And the Chair does point out very well the, the monumental task we have in restoring our train station from the condition that we got it back from the T versus what we gave it to the T in. And I've done some research on studies that have done overseas, basically a lot of Europe, on the rehabilitation on existing commuter rails. And we've had the commuter rail in Stoughton, and I can't remember how long, you know, just, years if we go back, quite a few years, and back when the trains were two or three cars, and that was about it. And so, with that, we've never really had anything that was, for a while, we did have, when the T took it over, we had a place for residents, rather, I shouldn't say, for passengers to stay out of the elements. And what we'd like to be able to do is look at some of those, if there was somebody that I could meet with in the future, to go over those and see how we can work, and if, maybe if there's a small group of the municipal governments that have these train stations, that maybe we can find common goals that we can engage the T on to make grants available. And, you know, there's a lot that can be done for commuter rail traffic that benefits the municipalities, as well as the Ts and their ridership. So, Madam Chair, through you, if you could follow up with Mr. Kane, and see if that's something we can do. As, as everybody here knows, the Town Manager asked me to kind of be the lead on this project, and we have already got our power turned on, we should have gas back in there, and we will have a functioning building when the weather starts to get nippy, we'll have heat, we'll have electricity, and we want to get that. And one of the things that we would like to at least entertain is opening the building and putting in maybe a small vendor for coffee, and just for passengers, because a lot of those passengers are our residents, and be able to utilize that. So, if there's something the T that can do to help out, baby steps, we're not looking, although we would love a couple million dollar grant, you know, that would be nice. But, you know, I, I think what we have to be able to do is show the benefit of the, the baby steps, and how, how we can make a difference with just a few of those. So, I'd be eager to hear what we can do to work together with some of the other municipal governments that have rails going through their town, and how we can even reach out through our respective congressmen, that, you know, we have some great congressmen, and, you know, one of them is the, the Chair of the Rules Committee in Congress that has a commuter rail going through his community. So, I think we can get Congress to throw something in as well under the federal rail, and on an air mark or things like that, that the T can put out to the municipal governments. But we can't do that unless we go to Congress and say, listen, this is your town, this is your town, and we want to work with the T to benefit the passengers of the T who are also our residents. And I think if we can do that and work together, it really helps everybody out. So, I, I'm pleased, very pleased, you know, to have you here tonight, and, and that speaks of your commitment, when you can get out here at nine o'clock at night and, and listen to our, our meeting, as they can be long sometimes. So, with that, sir, thank you very much, Madam Chair, I'd love to see what we can do to work together with the T on this.
Thank you so very much, Mr. McCrisky, and thank you so very much, Executive Director Kane, Vice Chair Cave had one question, comment?
Oh, yeah, just a very brief comment, I would just also like to express my, my gratitude for you showing up tonight and speaking to us, especially at such a late hour. There's been, you know, sort of a wall, a wall between us and, and people at the T for a very long time. And that's led to, honestly, what I think amounts to an adversarial relationship. I think having you show up here, speak to us, help us understand the work that you're doing. And it felt, it feels collaborative, it feels welcoming, and I think it's a change of tone that I'm very, I very much, you don't want to see fostered. So, to the extent of that, that's, that's something that's valuable, too, I just wanted to let you know that, that I, I very much appreciate you taking the time to meet with us, to speak with us, and I really genuinely look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you. Madam Chair, if I might, I just want to assure Mr. McCrisky that I am definitely here as a volunteer, I was not forced by the Chair, although if she asked, I definitely would have been here, but I'm happy to be here. And I would also like to note that I would be delighted to come visit Stoughton again in person. I'll try to bring some of my former colleagues from the T, I did work there for about eight years before taking up this role. I'll try to get some of my commuter rail folks and the real estate folks to come down with me. We would love to meet with the Town Manager and any of you folks that, that are in town without tripping OML, and we could definitely begin a conversation, and I'm very certain we can change any sort of an adversarial relationship to a collaborative one, and I just can't tell you how, how much we appreciate working with Stoughton and Ms. Roberts, and we look forward to a long and continued relationship.
Well, thank you very much, and once again, thank you so much for your patience with us tonight, and thank you for joining us, and I look forward to talking with you in the next couple of days, and we can schedule a couple of meetings. So, thank you, and see you at our next MBTA Advisory Board meeting.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much, have a good night.
Good night, bye-bye now. If there are no further business for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Corrigan?
I have one, one thing to bring before.
Yes, please, Mr. Carrera?
Because we didn't have any selectman comments.
Right.
I don't know if you know where Willow Street is, it runs between Page on the Canton End over to Turnpike Street, Joe, right? I was down there today looking at a job, and I couldn't believe the truck traffic through there. Container, dump truck, container, container, landscape trucks running from Page Street down to Turnpike. So, after I was done talking, I, I followed one of the trucks out, and he goes out, takes a right on Page, runs all the way through Canton, out, and then jumps on 138. The trucks that are going down that street, and I asked one of the residents, is this common? Because I haven't been down that end in a long time. And they go, it's more common than you can believe, it's every day, non-stop. So, I'm wondering if we can, I was going to mention it when Mr. Tisdale was on, but we had more important stuff to talk about that, but I think we got to go with a truck restriction on that road. I don't think it has to be an open hearing or anything. We, our Street and Water and Soil Commissioners, we can, we can put a restriction on it, a weight restriction, two and a half ton trucks, and that's it. That would limit it to basically pickup trucks.
Mr. Carrera, just, just in order to stay on the right side of open meeting law, I think we, rather than discussing the merits, can we schedule that for our next, next meeting to have this discussion?
I'm just want to bring it to you guys.
I know, but sharing your opinion without, that's something that's not on the agenda.
This is under citizens' comments, I mean, under selectmen's comments, I'm making a comment, doesn't matter, I'm bringing something up, I'm a member of this board, and I can bring it up.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
If I can, I agree with Scott, and I do agree that it needs to be on a meeting. But I, and again, this is always the gray area that, the way I read the open meeting law is.
I'm not asking for a vote, I'm just setting it up where we could probably talk about it, like you say, but I, I got to get this down and out while it's hot in my head.
We can schedule it, we can schedule it, that's not a problem.
What I would offer is that it's a simple thing the Town Manager can have the safety officer do to get this ball rolling, and it would need a meeting, but when it comes to this, and I guess I'm, I'll ask Town Council, is when you read the open meeting law, and it says, anything that was foreseeable, could foreseeably be expected by the Chair should be on an agenda. I don't know how cast in stone that is, it's a gray area for me, because that's the way I read it, and if the Chair can't foresee it, if you don't tell her. And if something was in a meeting and brought up an idea, to me, it sounds like we should be able to discuss that here, you know? But again, I, I agree, I always want to err, we just talked about it, always err on the side of caution, a week isn't going to make a difference, you know? But I agree, we put it on an agenda, and, and then have a lengthy discussion, and after the time.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't asking for anything solid, I was going to ask if we could talk about it, but I was setting it up because I had run into this at three o'clock today, so there was no way it was going to be an expected item on the agenda. But I do believe that I am a member of this board, and there's a lot of stuff that gets brought up and put out there, and I don't point fingers and say, I don't think we can talk about it. I know time is getting thin, and we got to go in the other room, but this is very important. If somebody gets killed on the street after I get shut up, then somebody's going to have to be looked at, and it ain't going to be me.
Well, Scott, I, I got to say, I don't think you're being shut up, it's just, you know, we want to be, we will get somebody that'll file an open meeting, you know, violation on this. So, it, bringing it up.
What, what is such an open violation about something that's safety?
Let me say it, let me say it, I understand, all I'm saying, I agree with you wholeheartedly. We bring it up, we make a comment, I'd like this put on the next agenda, so we can take a vote and do what we have to do, you know? And, and then, you know, with that, it's not something I think we want to do shoot from the hip. I agree with you, and I agree, I was on that street, the same thing, you know the deacon that lives down there, and, you know, I was, I was checking up on him, because we, I spent about two hours there trying to find out where he was. Neighbors called and said, you, we know you know him, we can't see him, we don't know where he is, we made, we had the fire and police department down there checking his house and so forth. So, I agree, I saw it myself, and it is, and they do it, and this is the same thing, when you have a road that's close to a real heavy area, and particularly another town, they're going to take the, the path of least resistance. So, I agree with you, let's just put it on the next agenda, and, and I think there's things, Scott, we can do in the, in the meantime, with the authority we have, there's things we can do and get some homework done before that, so.
Mr. Coulter, is there something you can do in the meantime?
Yes, ma'am.
And yes, I will put it on next week's agenda.
This is one of those things where all parties are right. It's a safety issue, if, I think what Scott is saying, and I, I agree with him, I completely agree with what Joe said. what Joe said, that there's a safety issue, we need to get it on the agenda, and we need to get the professionals here that can speak to it, like the police chief, Mr. Tisdale. And in the meantime, I can, Scott, I'm sure would instruct me to have Mark go down there with the safety officer, look into it, so when they're, at the next meeting, we can have a substantive discussion on what the problem is and what's wrong. Scott, to, to their point is because there wasn't a, a portion that said selectman input, someone could make a, even if it's frivolous, claim that we were talking about an agenda item that was not posted, that's all. So everybody's right, and I hear the message. Let's get it on the next agenda with the professionals here. I think Scott raised a great issue.
Yes, thank you very much. And if there's no further business for the Select Board, the Board will be entering into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Thea Town Hall Employees Association Union and Fire Union pursuant to General Law Chapter 30, 30A, Section 21A3, and subject to the Chair's declaration. I make a finding that discussing these items in open session may be detrimental to the town's negotiating or litigation position. Therefore, they will be discussed in executive session. We will not be returning into open session, but will adjourn from executive session. A motion to close our open meeting.
So moved.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We have to take a roll call vote because we're going into executive session. Mr. Gito.
We have to take the vote.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
Motion to enter executive session.
Thank you, and that's seconded. And Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? And I vote yes as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you very much.
Is my office, is my office okay?